Good afternoon. In accordance with Sections 45 and 53 of the Planning Act 1990, as amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment of the City of Toronto is called order. My name is Zahir Bright, and I will be chairing today's session. Panel members today are Gary McKay, Paul Goguen, and Peter Reid. Also present is Deputy Secretary Treasurer Sabrina Salatino. We acknowledge that the land we are meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Anishnaab, the Chipewar, the Haudenosaunee, and the Wendat peoples, and is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit, and Métis peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty 13 with the Mississaugas of the Credit. Committee of Adjustment public hearings are now conducted in a hybrid in-person and virtual format. Some applicants and participants will make their submissions in person, and others will participate virtually by electronic means through WebEx. The meetings are also streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel, and anyone wishing to view the hearing may watch on YouTube. Those who want to participate virtually and have registered in advance will be connecting with their computer or telephone and have the option of participating via video or audio only. When your item is called, you will be unmuted by the moderator. For both in-person and virtual participants, Committee of Adjustment staff will share presentations submitted in accordance with the written submission deadline. People attending in person today who want to receive a copy of the decision of the committee on an application must fill out a decision request card, and those participating virtually need to submit a written request for a decision by email. If you do not agree with the decision of the committee, you may be able to appeal the decision to the Toronto local appeal board, or in some limited circumstances, to the Ontario Land Tribunal. However, the provincial government amended the Planning Act and generally removed rights of third parties to appeal Committee of Adjustment decisions. Only the applicant, the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, specified persons, and public bodies are permitted to appeal decisions of the Committee of Adjustment. Appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the decision of the committee. Today, I will call each item in the order listed on the agenda. Where an application is uncontested, the agent or applicant may proceed with their presentation if desired. When the committee does not require a presentation, applicants are to advise the chair should they wish to speak to the committee. The committee may ask questions and/or take the matter into committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. I will comment when you are reaching the five minutes. Any presentation or other materials you wish to submit to the committee must have been emailed in advance of the hearing. Staff and committee members cannot accept materials at the hearing. When addressing the committee, please clearly state your name and address, and please remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. The applicant or agent will proceed first and will make a presentation to the committee on the application. Then individuals either in support or opposed to the application will be invited to speak. Generally, we first call on speakers in the hearing room and then those participating through WebEx. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after they have finished their presentation. When all speakers are finished, the applicant or agent has an opportunity to rebut only those issues that were raised by the speakers. This will mark the end of the discussion. The application will then be taken into committee for a decision. Colleagues, are there any declarations of interest of panel or staff? None? Thank you. Where else? Madam Deputy Secretary Treasurer, are there any deferral requests for deferrals that you've received?
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. Chair and panel members. So for this afternoon, there are two deferral requests that I see. Item number 24, 327 Robina Avenue, file number A0990/24TEY, as well as item number 27, 501 Arlington Avenue, file number A1003/24TEY. Through you, Mr. Chair. We could probably deal with both those deferral requests at this time.
Sounds good. So I'll look at the committee to see panel members to see if we can have a motion to defer the two items mentioned.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We probably should just have the applicant outline the reason for deferral. Yeah.
Thank you. There, I'm forgetting again. Thank you very much. So let's see. Agent for number 24.
Through the chair, the agent is online and ready.
Bear with me one second. Agent for number 24, Mario Silva, are you there? Mr. Silva?
Yes.
Are you there?
I am here.
Would we have your name and address, please? And if you could just speak a little bit more loudly.
Okay, I'll try that. That'd be better.
That's better. Name and address, please.
It's Mario Silva, 100 Oxbridge Avenue, Toronto.
Thank you. Your reasons for a deferral request?
Yes, I'm requesting a deferral because the plans have changed, primarily, which GFA was reduced and the ground floor is now about to go down. I have...
Sorry, we're having a hard time hearing Kim.
You need to speak a little bit more loudly, please.
..................
I don't believe that that's helping.
Closer to your mic?
Yes, it is.
And?
It's to the maximum, so...
Okay.
Unfortunately.
Give it another shot, let's see.
Okay, the reason for the deferral is because the plans have changed.
Okay. Good enough. Thank you. That was much better. We heard you clearly that time. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Silva. Excellent, thank you. Madam Deputy Secretary Treasurer, should we just vote on this one while we're at it?
Through you, Mr. Chair. We don't have any speakers for this one, so yes, you can make a vote on the deferral request.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to defer? Mr. McKay, thank you.
Yes, I move to defer this matter to allow revisions, yes.
And Mr. Reid, seconds, thank you. All those in favor? Thank you. Mr. Silva, your application has been deferred. Thank you.
And through you, Mr. Chair. Then we can move on to item number 27. There is a deferral request here, and I do see two speakers registered. So perhaps we'll hear from the agent first on the deferral request, and then we can hear from the two speakers on whether or not they support the deferral request.
Terrific, thank you. Okay, we're looking at Jennifer Buckland, who's the agent.
No.
Oh, sorry, I beg your pardon, I didn't... I should lift my head up more frequently.
Followed.
Are you the agent?
Agent named Craig Goodman, CSNP Architects.
Oh, sorry, I was looking at item number 25. I beg your pardon.
27 is our item number.
Thank you, Mr. Goodman. The reasons for your...
Right. We chose to defer our zoning examiner's report had missed one item, which we just discovered a few days ago, and it was updated actually just this morning. And it bears no change to our application documents, but we were advised that the report should be also in alignment with our application, so we have chosen to request deferral as early as possible.
Thank you. It's really a technical request, I mean.
Correct.
A technical error, yeah, thank you. Okay, we'll just go to, I believe...
Yeah, through the chair, we do have the speaker in person here, so the address at 2A Durham Avenue. You can come up to the podium.
Mr. Goodman, we'll ask you to vacate that seat, please. Thank you. Good afternoon. Hi. We just need your name and address, and then there's a very simple question. Are you in favor or not in favor of the deferral, and that's all we're dealing with at this point.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Oh, yes, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, my name's Laura Michaels, I live at 2A Durham Avenue. If we defer the quest, will more residents be able to sign up to speak?
I think you would, because it's deferred, and presumably there'd be enough time for anybody else to sign up if they wished to.
Then I agree to the terms.
Thank you. And moving on to the next... That's all we need, thank you so very much.
Hi, the speaker at 11 Durham Avenue, you haven't been muted.
Is that Niv Biran?
Yes, this is Niv Biran.
Hi, good afternoon. We just need your name, address, and a simple question, an answer to a simple question. Are you in favor or not in favor of the deferral?
That's Niv Biran, 11 Durham Avenue, and I am in favor of the deferral.
Thank you very kindly. Are there any other folks? That's it, okay. Mr. Goodman, we're back. Thank you. So, members, colleagues, I think we can go into committee and look for a deferral.
Yes, Chair, I'll move deferral to allow for the additional variance to be circulated in the notice.
Thank you. Second, Mr. McKay, thank you. All those in favor? Thank you. Mr. Goodman, you have your deferral.
Thank you very much.
And I believe we can now go back to item number 19. Okay. Item number 19. Item number 19 is 97 Morse Street. The purpose of the application is to alter the existing two-and-one-half-story semi-detached dwelling by constructing a partial front ground-floor addition with a basement extension below, a new front porch with stairs, a rear two-story addition with a basement expansion below, a rear first-story deck with stairs, and a third floor, rear third-story rooftop deck on the roof of the second story below. The existing rear basement walkout will be demolished. For this application, the committee had before it following communications, a copy of the minutes from the November 6, 2024, public hearing, and the materials submitted for consideration. Copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations. Arborist report for 99 Morse Street, received on December 6. Supporting materials from Jomar Manzano, agent, received October 22, 2024. Tree preservation plan, received December 6, 2024. We also have staff reports from Urban Forestry and Toronto Region Conservation Authority. And that's it, do we have...
Yeah, through the chair, we have the agent in person here.
Ah.
Yeah, as well as there are no registered speakers.
Good afternoon, Mr. Manzano, how are you?
I'm good.
We don't have any speakers at all in opposition or in support for your application. Let me just see if my colleagues would like a little presentation or not, and/or questions for you.
Oh, I'm...
Lucky day.
Great.
Okay. So we don't have any questions. Is there anything you'd like to add before we go into committee for a decision?
I just wanted to note that we did take the extra step since November to address urban forestry's concerns, and we have updated our files to show that as well, and we will be taking their recommendations.
Thank you. Thank you. So perhaps we can take it into committee and look for a motion. Mr. Goguen.
Hi, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I'd like to move this for approval. I find that the requested variances are minor, the documentation is quite good, and the correspondence with forestry staff and associated is up to date, so I like, again, I'd recommend we approve it with forestry condition two?
Correct.
And as submitted.
Thank you. Mr. McKay, seconding. And this is as... Is this an amended version, by the way? Did I hear you say amended? No, I don't believe so. Yeah, I don't believe there's any changes at all. Thank you. All those in favor? Thank you. Mr. Manzano, you have your approval.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Item number 20 is 59 Bolt B Avenue. Purpose of the application is to construct a new three-story dwelling duplex with separate front integral garages, rear ground-floor decks, and rear third-story balconies. The committee had before it the following communication: copy of the minutes from July 3, 2024, public hearing, and the materials submitted for consideration. Copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations. Planning rationale from the agent, received January 22, '25. Email correspondence from the agent, received January 22, 2025. And architectural renderings, received from the agent, January 22, 2025. We have staff reports from Urban Forestry, and community planning, and an advisory staff report from Metrolinks. We have correspondence in support from two addresses, 417 Jones Avenue and 343 Jones Avenue.
Through the chair, we have the agent online, and there are no registered speakers.
Thank you. Hello, is this Michael Lafreniere?
Yes, speaking, 951 Ossington, I'm the architect on the project. If you want to pull up a site plan, I'd be happy to provide a small presentation.
Let me just ask colleagues if they want a presentation or not, because you don't have anybody in opposition at all.
No, if there's no presentation, I would just like to ask one question regarding the Metrolinks advisory. This isn't one I've run across before, so I'd just like to understand, assuming this condition is tied to the application, what are we actually agreeing to? Is this... This seems to be related just to a noise ordinance, and I'm just curious, and I don't want to waste your time, but I'm just curious why this comes at this forum, and if you don't want to address that, that's fine, I'm just more curious than anything else.
Very good question. Let me see if I can pass it on to somebody more knowledgeable. I wonder if our Secretary...
Through you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
I can handle the question.
Thank you.
So we do circulate all of our applications to internal city divisions as well as external agencies. Metrolinks occasionally submits reports. These are conditions of approval. Typically, we don't impose the environmental easement condition. This is something that Metrolinks is dealing with on a broader form. However, the members have in the past imposed the warning clause.
Okay.
Condition.
A warning sounds fine, it just seems like it's a bit of a hassle to put something on title to say, if I understand correctly, we can't complain due to train noise, that whether it exists before or changes, which, you know...
I understand, but it is a condition that the members have imposed in the past, and it's just part of the purchase agreement.
Okay.
Thank you.
I guess the only thing I'll say is the reason why we deferred it had to do with the Crystal Arts Square lane, which, after many conversations, I'm not sure we really got to a solid understanding of what, if anything, we could do with that lane, because it seems to be a sort of unmaintained lane. So that's why the parking went from the back to the front. We prefer it to be in the back, but if that's not an option, it seems like a bad idea to get a proposal approved that has parking in a spot that's not 100% possible.
Okay, thank you. By the way, you are aware of the planning condition as well?
Yes. Yeah, preamble papers, plus with the school to the south, we agreed to have a condition that the third-story window would be frosted with an awning type operation, and we're happy to have that proposal on. That's right, that proposal, that condition, or a condition like that.
That's great, thank you so very much. Let me just see if my colleagues have any questions or comments. Any questions, comments? None? Okay. Mr. Lafreniere, there aren't any questions or comments, so we're going to take it into committee and look for a decision. Any votes, yeah?
Thanks, Chair, I'm happy to do this. I think this is a, it's a nice project on a small, kind of difficult-to-use piece of land, and I think the variances required for it are very, they're small, and some of them are there just because of the actual limitations of the site, but I think getting a duplex on this property is a very positive thing, particularly with its proximity to a major street. So I move approval of the application, subject to urban forestry and the community planning condition regarding papers.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Thank you, Mr. Goguen. All those in favor? Thank you. Mr. Lafreniere, you have your approval.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 21. Item number 21 is 62 Russell Hill Road. Purpose of the application is to legalize and to maintain the third, rear third-story balcony, which was constructed and lodged beyond the limits of the authorized building permit. The maximum, sorry, there's only one vary, variance requested in this one. And number 21. Mr. Marco Viera is the agent. Do we have any folks in opposition at all? None? Okay, great.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair.
Good afternoon, Mr. Viera, how are you?
Doing well, thank you. I'm at 257 Donraven Drive. I can answer any questions if you have, or give you a brief presentation on this one.
Thank you. I believe we may not, but let me ask my colleagues to see if anybody needs a presentation at all, or questions related to this particular one.
Well, just one question, sure.
Mr. Reid has a question for you.
Thank you, Chair. I just noticed that last time, the deferral was to address concerns from TRCA, and my understanding is you've done that, is that correct?
Through you, Mr. Chair, that is correct. We worked with TRCA the last six months. It was primarily to do with some over landscaping that had been done in the rear yard, so we had to reinstate some of the soft landscaping in the rear yard. As a result, TRCA has given us permission to do that, and they now have no objection to the proposal for the third-story balcony, because it doesn't impact them.
Right, okay, thanks a lot.
Thank you. Any other questions or concerns? No? Your application doesn't have any conditions attached to it as well, as far as I can see, which is good, so perhaps we'll take it into committee for a decision, for a motion. Mr. McKay?
TRCA is satisfied, and that's helpful, so I would move approval of this variance application, and I see no condition.
Thank you. A second, Mr. Reid, thank you. Mr. Reid, seconds. And if you can just add for the record, because this is a legalization issue. All those in favor? Thank you. You have your approval, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Wonderful, good afternoon.
Thank you, take care. Item number 22 is 287-291 Christie Street. Purpose of the application is to alter the development standards for the six-story residential building as approved under site-specific zoning bylaw 958-2022 and 957-2022 by increasing the building height and the maximum permitted gross floor area, also to reduce the height of the first-story building setbacks and minimum required residential parking spaces. The new nine-story residential building will contain a total of 65 residential dwelling units. The committee had before it the following communication: copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations. Revised diagram seven, received December 3, 2024. Covering letter from Sean McGaffey, the agent, November 7, 2024. Arborist report, received November 7, '24. Presentation materials from Mr. McGaffey, received January 22, '25. Servicing technical memo prepared by Passmore Services, received November 7. Transportation update letter, received November 7. Site-specific zoning bylaw affecting the subject property, sites, there's another one, affecting the subject property as well, so there are two site-specific zoning bylaw documentation. Commenting agencies, we have email correspondences from the Assistant Planner, Community Planning Department, Transportation Engineering Department, and Community Planning, the two from Community Planning. One received December 3, second one January 20, '25. We have correspondence in concern from Barry Cohen, Seton Village Residence Association, received January 27, 2025. Correspondence in concern from Terry Shear, Christie Pitts Residence Association, received January 27, 2025. Correspondence in opposition from Nancy Freeman, 562 Clinton Street, and Lucy DeMello, 279 Christie Street, and correspondence in opposition from Eliza McBride, 36 Melville Avenue, received January 23, 2025. Okay.
Through the chair, we have the agent here in person. There are no registered speakers at this time.
Okay, thank you. So we're looking at number 20. Bear with me a second, I'll make sure I got it right. 22. Okay, Mr. McGaffey. Hi, good afternoon.
Hi, Mr. Chair, good afternoon. It's actually Mr. Bronskiel here, joined by...
Oh, sorry, Mr. Bronskiel, I didn't even recognize you from this distance, must be the...
No, that's all right, sir. And I can now actually say good afternoon to you. It was 11:55 when I saw you last, so good afternoon.
So you're taking the place of Mr. McGaffey?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
But he's here joining me in case you have planning questions.
He's your shadow, I take it, as a point. Wonderful, thank you so much for being here. We don't have anybody in opposition. That's amazing. Let me see if there's any requests for any explanations or...
I think we should have a presentation.
A little presentation would do. Thank you.
Yeah, we're happy to do that. We do have the presentation that was submitted, which I think will give a good explanation of the evolution of this project from its previous approval. I would just note at the outset, we have canvassed this extensively with staff. There is an email, I think you've seen on the record, transportation... There is an email, I think you've seen on the record, transportation staff have expressed no concern. And then planning staff, their, their report is to be received for information, but I would just flag in their comments, they've indicated no objection. They've noted the revised massing is in keeping with the new mid-rise guidelines. And as I'll show you, they've noted that the increased front yard setback on Christie allows for a wider pedestrian clearway. So you've actually got planning staff. I'm actually going to say in support of what's before you, even though they've technically said they have no objection. So the, the presentation, if staff just don't mind finding it, and I apologize, Mr. Chair, I can't see that far, so I've got mine printed, so I can see it in front of you. So if I make noise in front of the microphone, my apologies. You've got a site on the east side of Christie, a little bit south of Dupont, and this committee is probably very familiar with the redevelopment that's occurred along that Dupont corridor, and in particular on the north side of Dupont. It's an approval from 2022, and I'm going to suggest to this committee, and it's, it's an example of what can happen in three short years in terms of applicable planning policy and guidelines. If staff don't mind, just going to the page that starts with the text. What Mr. McGaffey has done in this presentation is outline for you a number of significant things that have changed in that applicable framework since 2022. Notably, we have a new provincial planning statement from 2024. We don't have a growth plan anymore. I'm going to flag for you, I think the two most significant things are the Housing Action Plan with the update to the avenues policies, and I'm going to flag something for you about that in a minute, as well as the 2024 mid-rise building design guidelines. And we, this, this proposal is really about implementing those new guidelines with the support of city staff. Next page, if you don't mind. What that Housing Action Plan has done is this, it's actually going through Planning and Housing Committee this month. They're actually identifying hundreds of kilometers of new avenues for inclusion within the new city, within the City of Toronto official plan. That includes Christie, it includes Dupont in this area. So the lands are designated as mixed-use areas, but what has changed is that the adjacencies, which were lands designated as neighborhoods, now have the layer both of the expanded housing options on major streets, the E-Hon initiative that the city's done, and an overlay of it being in avenues, as you can see, all the way south on Christie. So that's a significant change in the evolution of the planning context. Next page, and I'm going to go through just a few of them with you. This shows you the evolution of the design, and what planning staff note is in terms of an improved public realm on Christie, but also implementing the new mid-rise guidelines. So here's what was approved in 2022. Very inefficient wedding cake construction at the back, small floor plates at the top that are actually extremely inefficient, and then strangely, a deep ground floor floor plate, which leads to a lot of dead and frankly, I'm going to say useless GFA. If you don't mind, the next page. What we've layered on is, in the green at the back is the new rear transition guideline. So you can see in the gray what the city's new approach to transition at the rear would actually permit on this site. And then if staff don't mind going to the next page, you can see what we've chosen to do, which is actually take off some from the front to increase the setback. That's the wider public realm. So you see that two-meter setback. Street trees can now be planted. We've got two. We're exploring with the city through site plan where we, whether we can get a third. You can also see at the back that we're actually doing a four-meter setback above what is required now by the new mid-rise guidelines. And then technically, what we're doing is taking some of that GFA and adding some height on the top with the support of city planning staff and as reviewed through shadow studies. If you don't mind, the next page. What this enables is a few things. A more efficient building construction. It enables 16 more units, and this is intended to be a rental project. So we're going to have 65 rental units at the end of this, should the committee see fit to approve it. The wider public realm, in fact, improved setback at the rear versus what is now recommended, in fact endorsed by city council. The street trees, and frankly, just a better building product to be able to deliver. It is a shovel, and I'll just end with the two images. Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, staff, you can see the front. The next page, please. Thank you. You can see there, that's now the intended front elevation along Christie. You can see the increased setback in the street trees and why staff have praised the public realm. The next page just shows a zoom in on that in terms of what we're be able, able to achieve. And then finally, just for full disclosure, the next page, if staff don't mind, you can just see how it's pushed back at the rear. So there is some additional height, there is some additional GFA, but it's being deployed in a way that is mitigating the impacts in accordance with the new mid-rise guidelines. So we're very excited that we can get this shovel-ready project going. 65 rental units, more efficient construction, better public realm, and so we hope the committee can authorize the variances. And, Mr. Chair, I don't think there are any conditions, but we hope that these variances might find approval of the committee.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I do believe you're correct. I don't see any conditions attached as such. I think that's been, it looks like you've been able to deal with all the matters of concerns that may have been raised previously. Let me just see if colleagues have any questions for you at all. Mr. McKay?
I just had one about the residential parking spaces. I was just looking at variance of five. So am I reading this correctly? That there are no residential parking spaces on the site?
That's the intent. What, what we're doing, this is always an interesting thing in terms of the bylaw versus the proposal. What we're doing is rationalizing this bylaw with the city council approval that has reduced residential parking down to zero. So the bylaw would have that. We may, through the site plan approval process, just in terms of the rental market, have a few residential spaces, but the bylaw would not require them. And so that's, that's the rationalization of the approach to parking through the variance process. And that has been vetted with transportation staff, and you have that email in front of you indicating they have no objection.
I know that area quite well. So we've got law laws on the north side of Dupont, of course, Fiesta Farms is further down on Christie. So just thinking about groceries and-
Yeah, we, we think it's a really walkable area. Excited to be able to put it here with that redevelopment that's occurred on the north side of Dupont. There's some great retail opportunities there. It really is a walkable area. Either go north to Dupont or, or south down to Blure.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So on the plans, it shows 21 spaces are provided through a stacker system on the cover sheet. Is that just for idealized situation or on a, I don't know what she said. It's a cover sheet for the plans.
Yeah, the, the plans, we're essentially looking at what we might be able to do if we had to in terms of parking. And so it's looking at the opportunity to use stackers. We're not convinced at the end of the day, we will provide them as part of the rental program, but we were making sure that we could if we needed to through the site plan that's been prepared.
Got it.
Thank you.
Mr. Reed, any questions?
Sure. Thanks, Chair. Yeah, just a couple of questions. So it seems like in, in the original approval, you were contemplating some non-residential use. And just if you could comment on what's changed with that. And then in variance two, the, the first story with the height of 2.7 meters, is that, is that a pinch point? Or if you can explain why that seems so low?
Yes, it's measured between the floor, the first story, and the ceiling of the first story. Is that 2.7 meters?
Yeah. If you can turn to the, the section drawing, perhaps, it's really just going to be measured to the underside of the mechanical plenum. So based on how 569 treats that first floor height under the bylaw, it has to essentially be measured to the lowest possible point.
Okay.
So that's, that's what's driving that.
Okay, so it's not like-
No, it's not. It really is a pinch point.
It's not going to be 2.7.
No, all the way through. Correct. Sorry. Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thanks. And then the other one was the, the commercial usage.
Yeah, as vibrant as Dupont is, Christie's a little less. And so while we're happy about the improved public realm in terms of the street trees, it may be a challenge to provide the retail. And so we're not saying no. I think, again, this is a zoning thing where we're saying, please don't make us require it, because it could be a challenge at grade. The construction of the building is such that if there, if it could be provided, we would. But we just, we're a little skeptical as you turn and come south on Christie that it's viable, and it would end up being dead space.
Yeah, understood. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. McGaffey and Mr. Bronski. Thank you so very much. I personally don't have any questions. Like Mr. McKay, I frequent that neighborhood quite frequent for coffee, for him, free advertising there. It's a great project. I think it's, and the location is definitely an excellent location in need of great increased residential rental property, rental homes accommodation. Let me see if we, if there are no other comments or concerns, maybe we could take it into committee and come forth with a motion.
Sure, I'll, I'll start with a couple of comments, Chair, I think. I was a bit skeptical when I saw this. I mean, it's a, it's a very large increase in GFA and also height for what is a major street, but feels like a, a minor major street. But I, I do, I do think that there are benefits from this. I think the massing is actually results in, in a project that is less impactful on the neighbors. And I think particularly increasing the setback on Christie is, is very good. That, that's, that intersection is danger, it feels dangerous. And I think that that additional setback and public realm there will be a net benefit for the area. And then the, like, I was just trying to figure out what is the negative side of it. And the height is it. And that's just some, I think, some additional shadow, which would be not even really significantly perceptible. So I, I support the application.
Would you like to turn it into a motion?
Yeah, I'll turn it into a motion if my colleagues don't wish to add anything. But yeah, I think it's a good project. So for, for those reasons, I'll move approval of the application with no condition.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. A second. Thank you, Mr. McKay. All those in favor? Bronski? Mr. McGaffey, you have your approval. Thank you. Moving on to item number 23, 55 Hanaford Street. Purpose of the application is to alter the existing two-story semi-detached dwelling by constructing a rear one-story addition with a basement walkout, a ground floor deck, and a second-story rooftop terrace. The committee had before it the following communication. Copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations. Eleven photographs of, pardon you, of trees, the front yard and rear yard of the subject property received November 12, 2024. We have two form letters in support signed by owners and occupants of 53 and 57 Hanaford Street, received on January 27, 2025.
Yeah, through the chair, we have the agent in person.
Good afternoon.
And there are no speakers at this time.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Barry. Ah, sorry, Mr. Abby. Figure, pardon. Thank you. It's, you've got a very straightforward application with the, with one variance request. Let me just see if my colleagues would either like a little explanation, presentation, or questions for you. Just some questions, please. Thank you, Mr. Reed.
Thanks, Chair. Just regarding the, that second story deck or balcony that you have in the back, is, are, is, are there concerns about overlook to the, to the north and south?
Well, both the neighbors supported it and never mentioned previously, but we could certainly put them on if they needed it.
Okay.
I think it would work both ways anyway. I think the, the actual tenants, the owners would probably put up a five-foot screen on both sides anyway.
Okay. But you don't see it as being, we shouldn't attach that as a condition you would prefer?
I don't think so.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions or thoughts, concerns? Nope. Mr. McKay, Mr. Gogan?
It seemed to be setback issues, you know, in terms of the variance thought. So it's not major.
Possible motion? Mr. Gogan?
Yeah, I think, again, thanks for the, the application is one item, one variance, very minor nature, dealing with site conditions and, and associated setback issues. So I recommend we approve this application.
Thank you. Do we have a second, Mr. McKay? Thank you. All those in favor? Thank you. You have your approval, sir.
Thank you, committee. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Moving on to item number 24.
That's the deferred one, sir?
Sorry.
That's the deferred one, so.
Oh, that's the one that's deferred. That's correct. Sorry. Then it's item number 25. Number 25 is 37 Richard Avenue. Purpose of the application is to alter the existing two-story detached dwelling by enclosing the existing front porch for habitable space. Also to construct a one-story ancillary building detached garage in the rear, rear yard abutting Hertle Avenue with a new driveway that will extend from the front lot line to the rear garage. And we have five variances before us. The committee had before it the following communication. Copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations. Nine photographs of the trees in the front yard and rear yard with, with site plan of the subject property received November 18, 2024. Supporting materials received from the agent January 23, 2025. We have reports, correspondence from Transportation Engineering Coordinator, staff report from the Director of Community Planning, and support letters, five form letters in support from owners and occupants of 108 Hertle Avenue, 44 Richard Avenue, 46 Richard Avenue, 35 and 42 Richard Avenue. And we have... Number 25. Buckland?
No, through the chair, we have the agent online, and we have one speaker in interest. That's in person. Yeah.
Thank you. Ms. Buckland?
Sorry.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, perfectly. Thank you. Name an address, please.
Yeah. Good afternoon, members of the committee. My name is Jennifer Buckland, and I'm speaking on behalf of the owner of 37 Richard Avenue. My address is 16 Napuah Avenue, Toronto.
Thank you. I think we might need a person. We have, we do have one person in, in interest. Perhaps we could just have a very short presentation?
Certainly. So our building proposal has two components, as outlined, one being to build a single-story enclosed porch at the front of the house. And the second component is to build a fully detached single-car garage at the rear of the property. So there's five variants that relate to these two components. Excuse my difficult so far with me. I'll speak to the variances relating to the enclosed porch first. One pertains to the proposed porch enclosure encroaching past the front setback. When you do the math, it encroaches 1.32 meters past the front setback. We were taking into the account the existing neighborhood in the design. We kept the porch enclosure modest. It's only one single story, it covers just a little more than one-half the width of the house. I don't know if you want to look, but I have a supporting document called Enclosed Porches, if you'd like to put that up. So there's, that's our house. As you can see, the houses around it are sort of older and most of them- and most of them anyways. So we just the the enclosed porch is just is sort of like I said, one story high. It's just sort of around the the east side of the of the facade of the house. So if you're okay, so I've illustrated there that there are two other enclosed porches almost directly across the street. If you scroll down, keep going. I did a little state map and you'll see. So there's thirty-seven Richard, and you'll see that thirty-four and forty also have small enclosed porches, very similar. And then if you scroll back up, I showed a little floor plan. Keep going up one more. I think it is. There it is. And what I'm trying to illustrate there is that the existing entry to the house is very crowded currently. It's the family has five people in it, them parents and three children. So the existing entry is very crowded and inadequate for the family of five. So a modest enclosed porch will allow for more space for entry and coat and boot storage. The second variance pertaining to the front, the second variance pertains to the front porch enclosure as with regard to soft landscaping. The front yard is required to have seventy-five percent of soft landscaping. We've got seventy-three. So we're actually falling short about a quarter of a square meter of soft landscaping in terms of what we're required to have. So it's just a quarter of a square meter. The second component of our building proposal is a fully detached car fully detached single-car garage at the rear of the property. There's actually, if you if you don't mind putting up the document, view of garage. There are three minor variances relating to the garage structure. The first variance pertains to the width of the driveway. The driveway was is actually existing, and it's the existing drive is slightly narrower than the required two-point-zero meters. We've only the existing drive was one-point-eighty-six. So it goes along the the east side of the house. But since we had to continue it to the back to service the garage, Transportation looked at it, and they had no objections with the continuing the narrow driveway of one-point-eighty-six meters. The other the other two variances for the garage were both triggered by an unusual site condition. And actually, this is a great photo to kind of understand that. Since the rear of our property about the residential street, which is Hertle Street, the requirement setback is six-point-zero meters. What I wanted to illustrate here is that there's already a precedent for ancillary structures at the end of Hertle, encroaching past the required six-meter setback. You'll note the large green garage on the property adjacent to ours on the west side. It encroaches past its setback on Hertle roughly a meter more than our garage. And then I just kind of drew a little diagram of where our garage would be. It's so it's tucked in kind of behind that garage on Hertle Avenue, and it'll be behind the fence. And the owner of Hertle Avenue that has the garage there that's behind ours actually is in support of our project, and he sent in a letter of support to the city.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Let me just see if we've got one person in in interest. I take it with your present right here. Ms. Buckland, if you don't mind, you can respond to the person in interest subsequent to his presentation. Mr. Kennedy? Hi. Good afternoon. Welcome. Thank you very much for being here.
Hi there.
You got your five minutes?
Yeah, sure. I just I live at thirty-nine Richard, so I'm in the immediate neighbor. And I don't oppose the situation. I just wanted to sort of present like drainage, just because I'm the immediate neighbor, obviously, with the backyard being, you know, constructing a garage, obviously, you know, whatever is allowed is allowed. But I just was wondering, you know, can we make sure that well, first off, my first concern was like if there's an asphalt driveway or a concrete driveway to the garage, you know, that severe storm that we had this year. I mean, I have pictures of like, you know, three feet of water in my backyard at the back, where, you know, on his side would be the garage. So I was just my concern is with the new structure plus a driveway, I just want to make sure water won't be coming into my house. That's all. You know, I've been there ten years, and this water, we, you know, there's some, I think they have like the water reports, you know, there's an aquifer or something at the we're at the bottom of the street. And so that it's a big issue. And so, you know, like this summer, if that structure had been there, and the water is is sort of coming to my side or something, we could have been in, you know, big trouble. That that's essentially what I came to the meeting to to address. And I wonder, you know, in the plans, you can't see that it's environmentally permeable driveway or anything. So that's that's all I was wanted to know. And and just, you know, I know there's rules, and I don't think drainage is really part of it necessarily. But that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you very much. Hopefully, the agent will give you a response that might be favorable to your questions.
Yes, I'm happy to speak to that. Initially, I thought he actually had a concern with the structure itself, the garage structure itself in terms of water management running off the roof and onto his side. So we actually do have a diagram. You don't necessarily have to look at it now, because it seems like his his concern is more about the driveway. But the the roof water runoff is that the water that runs off towards his property would be caught in a eaves trough and diverted through a rainwater leader down toward the middle of our property. So that so the garage structure itself shouldn't be an issue. With regard to the driveway, I mean, part of it is is an existing driveway. And I believe, I think it goes to the rear facade of the house. So indeed, the rest of it is an extension. So I would I would suggest, you know, this isn't essentially, this is not typically part of, you know, planning or zoning bylaws. But I would suggest that perhaps the owner of our property could have the driveway drained. It just needs to be one or two percent toward our backyard to make water, you know, to prevent water from flowing to his next-door neighbor, to assuage that concern.
Thank you very much. Let me just see if my colleagues have any questions of you. Mr. Gog?
Not of the deputant. Thank you very much. But for the applicant, I just want to do follow-up. Is the driveway being replaced? Or is it being is it remaining?
I I don't know if his plan is to replace the existing driveway.
The neighbor said no.
No, I all I can speak to is that the the new part from the rear of the house to the garage is is new. So we can definitely, you know, slope, you know, work on the grading for that one, to carry water to the to the west side.
Well, what I was going to suggest was that since it may require regrading, and you're a little deficient on your landscape, would you consider permeable pavers for that driveway?
We could. You know, obviously, we want to accommodate the neighbor on the on the east side. I haven't spoken to to my client about that, but I'm sure he would be open to any ways, you know, that he can work with an air to remediate the water runoff.
Would you accept that as a condition for approval?
Ms. Buckland, are you still there?
Yeah, sorry. Oh, am I? Sorry.
I was asking you if we made.
A question?
I thought you're I thought you were asking the neighbor. Yes, we I will accept as a condition.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Just for my part, let me just see if any other colleagues have questions. Yeah, I I think that was one of my concerns as well, because on your site plan, it clearly states that this is a proposed driveway. We suggest that it's going to be produced at some point, which would mean eliminating whatever was there before. But I think that the.
Yeah, I think I don't know if that was misnoted, because there is an existing driveway. But regardless, that's that's fine. We'll work with the others to remediate the water, the water runoff.
I think the 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 request for permeable paving will serve both your client as well as your neighbor very well. Drainage is a huge issue and becoming even greater as we as we anticipate spring and spring rains and then summer thunderstorms. Thank you so very much. Let me see if we can take it into committee for either some discussion or possible decision at this point.
Okay, well, you know what? I'll move this in.
Thank you, Mr. Gog.
First, for the I thank you for the neighbor for showing up and sharing his point of view as well. Excellent application with a lot of information. So again, by going to the item, it is, I feel it is a minor variance with regard to this, the proposed invention, both for the front porch as well as for the accessory ancillary building in the back. I think that the the conditions, especially with regard to the unique nature of where that rear garage sits in relationship to adjacent properties, does make it minor as well. So I would propose that we approve this with the condition of permeable paving for the drive, proposed driveway.
And there's also planning.
As our landscape.
Planning condition.
Substantially in accordance with the with the plan.
Do we have a second, Mr. McKay? Thank you very kindly.
Sorry, sorry, through you, Mr. Chair. Can we repeat those conditions? So the driveway is to be constructed with permeable pavers and?
And there's also a planning condition. I hope you are aware of that one related to variance number one.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you kindly. We have a motion on the floor and a second. All those in favor? Thank you. It's unanimous approval. Thank you for those two conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in, sir.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Sorry. Peter Reed and Mr. Chair, I don't see your videos on through WebEx.
I'm on I'm on in the room, Sabrina.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So is the.
Okay.
Should we check something else or just continue on?
Let's continue on, please.
Thank you. We leave the technical matter in the very able hands of our colleagues here. Okay, moving on to number twenty-six. Item twenty-six. Item number twenty-six, the purpose of which is to alter the existing two-story semi-detached dwelling by constructing a front one-story addition, front porch enclosure with a bay window, a front porch with stairs, a rear two-story addition, partially cantilevered on the west side, and a one-story addition with a rear ground floor deck with stairs. We have before us six variances requested. The committee had before it the following communication: copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations; two photographs of the subject property received November twenty-first, twenty-four; covering letter from Sean Galbraith, the agent, received January twenty-second, twenty twenty-five; tree inventory received on November the twenty-first, twenty twenty-four; staff advisory from Metro Links. It's an advisory notice from Metro Links. And we have correspondence in the form of form letters in support from fifty-nine Boltby Avenue, four-eighteen Jones Avenue, eighty-seven Dingwall Avenue. And we have.
Through the chair, we have the agent online. There are no registered speakers.
Twenty-six. Mr. Galbraith, are you there?
I am. Good afternoon.
Hi, good afternoon. How are you?
Very well.
Wonderful. We don't have anybody in opposition. But let me just see if my colleagues have any items, questions, or concerns or requests of presentation.
I'm okay, Chair. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Okay, none? Mr. Galbraith, it looks like we don't have any questions at this point or need for a presentation. So perhaps at this point, I'll ask my colleagues to see if there's a motion that we could derive from the floor.
Chair, I'm happy to move a motion. I think this is a reasonable application. And thanks to Mr. Galbraith for his his always good memos. And this, I think that clearly outlined the extent of the variances and the fact that they are quite minor, particularly the the length is is limited, or the depth, sorry, is limited to a small portion of the house, a small width of it, and just for a single story. And regarding the the porch in the front, I think there's it's just a very common condition in the east end and specifically on Jones that porches get enclosed to to provide better living space for for the tenants. So I I'm going to move approval without condition.
Thank you very much. Do we have a second? Mr. McKay? Thank you. All those in favor? Thank you. Mr. Galbraith, you have your approval.
Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Thank you, and you too. Take care. Number twenty-seven. That was deferred. Correct. Thank you. And so we go to the last item in this particular round, which is number twenty-eight. Number twenty-eight. Number twenty-eight is eighty Durant Avenue. Purpose of the application is to construct a new two-story detached dwelling, a duplex, with an integral garage, a covered front porch with stairs, and a covered rear deck with stairs. Also to construct a one-story ancillary building to contain one garden suite in the rear yard. There will be a total of three residential dwelling units on the slot, two units within the main dwelling, and one unit within the ancillary building. We have a request for one variance. The committee had before it the following communication: copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations; and Arborist report received on November twenty-second. And we also have a staff report from Urban Forestry. Do we have the agent online?
Through the chair, we have agent online, and there are no speakers at this time.
Thank you. This is number eight. Mr. Dome?
Yes, Joe Dome, one thirty-three Torresdale Avenue, agent for the owners.
Thank you. Welcome. Let me just ask my colleagues to see if there's any questions or any need for any presentation or anything of that sort. Bear with me. None? In which case, I wonder if we could take it into committee for motion? Thank you, Mr. Reed.
Thank you. Yeah, there's the one variance before us, and it's eighteen centimeters above what's what's permitted. I don't I don't even think that's really perceptible from the street. And so I believe that it's it's minor in its impact and in its totality. So I move approval without condition.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Second?
I don't think so.
Thank you very kindly, Mr. McKay. All those in favor? Thank you. You have your approval, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gom.
Through you, Mr. Chair. At this time, then, we'll take a break and resume back at three-thirty to deal with items twenty-nine to thirty-five.
Thank you very kindly. All set? Thank you. Thank you. Welcome back. We now move on to item number 29, 485 Queen Street West. The purpose of this application is to alter the existing three-story semi-detached building by consulting, sorry, constructing three residential dwelling units on the third floor. The existing retail space on the ground floor and its existing office space on the second floor will be maintained and unaltered. There will be no vehicular or bicycle parking spaces provided on site. photographs of the subject property for business use received January fourteenth, twenty-twenty-five, three photographs of the subject property received November twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-four. There is a staff report from city planning, community planning, and I believe that is it. Number twenty-nine. Do we have the agent with us?
Yeah, the agent's here in person.
Hi, good afternoon. How are you? Am I pronouncing correctly, Kolarov?
Correct.
Thank you. Mr. Kolarov, let me just see if my colleagues have any questions or require a small presentation.
Ready to answer, yeah. The site planner, I have something to add to the comments from planning. They propose to pole and ring racks, bike racks, at the front of the building and a bench. Now, if you could zoom in at that area, first of all, the building occupies completely the lot. There is absolutely no space. We have Queen Street on one side, two lanes, and another building. So that's all. Site plan is at the beginning, page number one. Yeah, and the top, at the top is Queen Street. So if you could zoom in there, you will see that the frontage is really narrow for this existing for decades already building. There is a light pole, and in addition, we have turning of vehicles quite often into the lane way. So basically, to accommodate what planning is proposing, and I don't argue that that's a good idea in general, and it was done further west on Queen Street on the sidewalk, but to accommodate these two, two bike racks and a bench in addition, may be creating some conflicts with respect to maintenance, no cleaning, loading to the retail at the ground floor, and at the end of the day, may show not to be beneficial. In the same time, and lastly, that's a lawfully existing building, as per the definitions of the zoning by law. It's been in this shape without any additions for many, many years, and obviously, there is no way to accommodate parking spaces and bicycle. And as per zoning by law, the same, actually, I don't have to cite it, but whatever's existing in a lawfully existing building should be deemed to be required in any alteration that does not include additions to that building. Therefore, I believe that, and I hope that you will consider these additional clarifications and will allow the project to move forward.
Thank you for that. While you were talking about those, I just quickly went to looking at an image from Google Street Map.
Yeah.
And one of the things, I see, take your point about the narrow space that you have. But what I was just looking at, and I'm trying to see what the address, the address of the property, I'm looking at, it's five, five zero one, I believe, Queen Street West. There's a building there just near the property called, a business called ValueBuds. I wonder if you could go to Google Street Map at all?
The, the building to the east?
I think it might be further west.
We have a lane to the west.
So you see right there, if you just zoom out a little bit, right there next to that tree, there is a bicycle.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's to the west, yes.
Yeah, so it, I'm going to assume that the sidewalk is about the same width down the street as yours. So I'm just wondering if having, because there are two things that the city's planning departments are asking for. The one is, sorry, bear with me, I've just got to go to my various pages here. So planning staff respectfully recommend the following conditions, where one condition is two, post and bike, a ring bike racks, which
Yes, exactly.
Yeah. And the other is a bench.
Yes.
I know the bench is going to take a lot more room, both width and length. So I'm just wondering if, and I will have a chat with my colleagues, but I can, I can see the post and ring bike racks not being problematic.
Yeah.
Maybe the bench, perhaps. So I just thought I'd throw that out at you before I ask my colleagues if they'd like to.
I agree with you, and I just wanted to, to present you with my opinion and concerns about that. And it looks like we're the same opinion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me see if my colleagues have any other questions or requests for a presentation, perhaps. Mr. Reed?
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, I just, I have a question in regard to the staff report. I think what you're proposing makes sense, and I don't think any of us would have any issue with it in terms of the actual building. But did they communicate to you how they saw this getting rolled out? Like, I always thought that the city installed the bike rings and benches. I mean, I'm assuming they have standards that...
How, how this will practically happen about the, no, they didn't. I'm assuming that once we move forward, we'll have to contact a specific department in the city to get permission and to see, probably the city crew will have to install them because that's a city standard.
Right.
And it will cost something. And we have somebody from the side of the owner of the building, and apparently, it will be coordinated and done according to the standards.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Mr. McKay, Mr. Gogan, any thoughts, any concerns, questions?
I don't find any objection to the bike rings.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's, that's good.
I guess it's just who does it.
Yeah, it just, I found it odd that it wasn't more spelt out in the memo, that's all. Yeah.
I suppose the, the, the first condition says the racks will be installed between, doesn't say who's going to install them. So I imagine if we, just a thought, and if perhaps we could be in committee right now.
Yeah, that's good.
As we can have this conversation. I'm just wondering if it's possible to impose item one of the condition and not two, the bench?
I agree. I think
That makes sense.
The bench is maybe overreach a bit. I think that's more the city's responsibility, not the applicant's. But I do think, like, the bike post and ring, like, that's related to the variance, right? So I think that that's fair. But I think maybe we alternate the language a bit to say, at the, to the city's satisfaction, or to the city's standard, or maybe?
So if we don't have any other questions or concerns, I will just come out of committee. I believe the agent has a comment.
Yeah, just one last comment about the bikes. I was wondering why the city did not install rings further in that small stretch of Queen Street. Why did they stop? Was there a reason similar to our discussion, our concerns, or they just decided that they will stop there? That's the only thing, and we'll know probably later on. And second, the zone, the notice from the city, from the zoning review application, there is a comment for non-compliance with parking, that they are looking for two, questioning two visitors' parking. But I believe that these are not required as per, I have reference to the zoning by law, and it is two hundred, five, ten, eleven parking rate exemption for a lawful building. I believe it can be applied.
I, I
Or just to, to get the minor variance for that.
I think the first part of your question about why the city didn't is beyond us. But I can say, from what I can see on Google Street Map, is that both on the east side of your property and on the west side, within fifty feet, there are bicycle posts, the ring posts. So why they missed your property?
Utility pole, some required setbacks around, who knows?
I, I really don't know. And that may be something they'll figure that, figure out when it comes to it. Anyway, perhaps we take it into committee and see if we can come up with a motion and see where that goes. Mr. Reed?
Yeah, Chair, I, I do, I think that the, the two, the bike racks are defensible, and I think would be a positive feature. But I wouldn't include the bench. I think that's, that's, I think that's a city, a city issue that, that doesn't relate to the variances being requested. So I'll move approval of the application, subject to just the first planning condition. And I don't know, I don't know if we should install other, add any other language regarding to the satisfaction of the chief planner, or I don't, I think that might just confuse it. Right? Yeah. Okay, so just move approval subject to the first planning condition.
Thank you. Mr. Gogan, thank you. All who's in favor? Thank you. You have your approval, sir, with half the planning condition.
Thank you.
Take care.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to, that was twenty-nine. We're on to number thirty. Item number thirty is ten Sunnybrook Road. Purpose of the application: to construct a new three-story detached dwelling with a front covered porch, a front integral garage, a rear basement walkout, and a rear covered ground floor deck with stairs. Also, to reconstruct the front driveway abutting Sunnybrook Road. With this application, the committee had before it the following communication: copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, revised site plan, floor plans and elevations received January seventh, twenty-twenty-five, revised zoning notice received January seventeen, twenty-twenty-five, red line public notice received January twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five, a cover letter from the agent received January twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four, arborist's report received November twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-four, some comparables from the agent received January seventeen, twenty-twenty-five, and January twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five, tree protection plan prepared by Post Architecture received November twenty-fifth. We have a staff report from the, from Urban Forestry. We have three form letters in support signed by owners and occupants of three Hazel Bay Road, eight and nine Sunnybrook Road. We also have correspondence in opposition from Nicholas Singh on behalf of the Swansea Area Rate Payers Association, but may be received on the twenty-seventh of January, twenty-twenty-five. So we have with us, I believe
Through the chair, we have the agent here in person.
Thank you.
Also, we have the opposition speakers online as well.
Oh, Mr. Singh's online. Thank you. Mr. Postelou, how are you? I hope I pronounced that correctly. If not, please correct me. We might, we will need a little presentation since we have Mrs. Singh in opposition.
Absolutely. And with me today is also one of the
I do beg your pardon. I have to apologize. Because it's redlined, there's some changes to the variances. Perhaps we can just go through them one at a time, and so we can note what the changes are.
Yes, of course. So the
Which variances are being changed?
Scroll down a little bit. So variance number ten has been eliminated. We have spoken with
Eliminated. For the old folks.
Okay.
So number ten is done.
Yeah.
That's out. And?
Variance number nine, I would like to, I'll explain the adjustment that we had to make here. And we would like to propose that we could even do better than what had been red-marked here. The notice that had been sent to the neighbors had an error in the numbers that were used to calculate. It showed a total landscape area of eight-point-nine-two, but the proposed area was ten-point-four-one square meters instead. We would like to propose that we could provide thirteen-point-two square meters of landscaping, which translates to three, thirty-three percent soft landscaping at the front.
Thirty-three percent?
Thirty-three percent.
Not forty-four, as was shown. That's the error.
That was the error. It was a calculation error. The numbers didn't add up. We've spoken with transportation. Once we, we could build a new driveway to align with the garage, and we won't need as wide an access to us. We can fit more landscaping that way.
Any other changes?
That's it.
That's it. Wonderful. Okay, presentation is yours. Five minutes to go.
Thank you. I'd like to also mention that, I will start our presentation, but in regards to the front yard landscaping, thirty-three percent is similar to, due to the short front yards of the houses on Sunnybrook and the parking requirement, it is a typical number. We've tried to maximize it as much as possible. And for example, number six Sunnybrook was approved in September twenty-twenty-four with twenty-eight percent front yard landscaping. Our proposal involves demolishing the existing dwelling and constructing a new single-family home with a rear yard and basement walkout. The design includes an integrated garage and does not incur any variances for the garage or the driveway. If you could please refer to our front elevation drawing A five on the screen. Is that okay to pull up our elevation A five? You could see that we are proposing to conceal the basement walls that are above ground with landscaping, planters, and site topography. And this is to minimize the massing and to incorporate landscape into the design of the front elevation. The main steps are also parallel to the house, not perpendicular, so that they too could be concealed behind the planters. Despite burying the foundation walls, we are incurring, incurring variances number five for maximum building height, six for sidewall height, seven for first-floor height, and number eight for FSI, as a result of the established grade on this property. For context, I would like to explain, I'm sure the jury is aware of this, but perhaps others speaking in opposition or not, that building height for zoning purposes is not the same as the building's overall height in relation to the driveway, for example. Building height is determined on the established grade, which is the average of the two neighbors' points of elevation immediately next to us. In our case, you can see in elevation five, we have established grade determined as the average of the two properties next to us. And therefore, the distance to the first main floor is two-point-three-nine. This may appear high as a statistic, but when compared to other proved houses with integral garages, it is no different in height and may even be lower. If we could please pull up forty-four Morningside on the Google Street View. I'd like to use this as an example of established grade, this one, thank you. The house with the, second last from the corner with the many steps. This is also an integrated garage and has three stories of living space above it, similar to our proposal. But here, the established grade, since it is the average of the two lots adjacent to it, comes two-thirds up the stairs. From that From that point, we could measure to the first floor, it's 1.39 meters, and this was approved. However, we can see that there are 17 risers to the first floor, and at seven-inch height per riser, this translates to 3.02 meters of height from the driveway to the first floor. In contrast to this, we have only 12 risers to our first floor from the driveway, which means that our main floor would be, our main floor level would be lower than this main floor level. Yet, our statistic appears higher. This method of calculating height should be considered on an individual basis because it depends on the grade points outside our property, which we cannot alter. The established grade also determines the total building height, variance five, sidewall height, variance six, and we could extrapolate that those, those variances also appear taller on paper, but in essence are similar to other three-story houses with integrated garages. Established height also determines whether basement's floor area would need to be included in the overall FSI. This is in regarding to variance number eight. In our case, we did have to include our basement area, floor area, which skewed the statistic in other, in relation to other three-story homes. Our FSI without basement area would be 1.05.
Sorry to interrupt you, but I wonder if you could--
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Finally, I'd like to reference 14 Sunnybrook, which is only two doors away from us, as a comparable for ours, as it relates to variance one for front yard setback, and number four, building length. In the Google Street View, we could see that this house projects beyond the rear wall of ours. We would be aligning with number 14 Sunnybrook in plan for the front yard setback and the rear yard overall length. The overall length variance, I should point out, applies only to a portion of the basement, which has a walkout and therefore is included, but the overall massing of the house above grade is less than the allowed 17 meters. The front yard setback area also refers to, only applies only to the two lower levels of our house, since the third floor is pushed back in line with the existing front wall of the house and the other houses.
Thank you. Perhaps some of your comments may also emerge when you're responding--
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Through the chair, can we just go back to minor variance number nine? It's 33%, but can you say the square meters again?
Yes.
Thank you. Yeah, what were the changes for minor variance nine, I think, right?
Number nine, it's 13 meters square of soft landscape area and 33%.
Thank you.
Thirteen, thirteen or 13.2?
Thirteen meter square, point zero. One, three, point zero.
One, three, point zero, okay. Meter squared and 33%.
Thirty-three percent.
Thank you. Thank you. Ready for Mr. Singh? Thank you.
Hi, Nicholas Singh, you have been unmuted.
Good afternoon, Mr. Singh.
Good afternoon, yes, Nicholas Singh, Swansea Area Rate Payers Association.
Address, please, Mr. Singh? Just for the record, your address?
Swansea Area Rate Payers Association is at 95 Lavenia.
Thank you. You have five minutes, Mr. Singh.
Okay, thank you. On screen, can I get the applicant's supporting material map, please? Yes. So this application now has an amended list of 11 variances, there being two setbacks in variance number two, and variance number three seeks two variances for the projection of the roof eaves and to be located at the lot line. So these 11 variances seek to put an oversized house on a lot on a street that simply doesn't support it. The applicant has provided an examination of the broader neighborhood and has compared the application to the other buildings in the broader neighborhood context. The applicant's comparison map shows us 1,258 buildings. The applicant found 19 buildings for their comparison chart. This is a very small 2% compatibility rate. Out of the 19 comparison buildings that were selected for the comparison chart, not one of them has the three variances selected for the chart. So while there may be examples which match some parts of the proposal, none of them have all of the, the excesses that this proposal does. So I'll look at these specific variances to see how they measure up. So variance number one for front yard setback, this is an unusual setback. If you have a look at the street, the houses on the street are in line. Number 14, if it is out of line, it isn't by much. Variance two seeks to squeeze the side yard setbacks on both sides of the building. Only six Sunnybrook was found to have a side yard setback, and that was for 0.6 meters on the east side. No buildings were found with setbacks for both sides and none with 0.18 meters. Variance number three seeks to put the eaves where other eaves in the study area have not been approved. Variance four seeks to make this building longer at the front and the back compared to the neighbors, and it appears to be the only building with approved excess length on the street or in the study area. Variance five seeks to push the building height almost two meters higher than the neighbors. It's equal in height to only one other building, which is found over on Riverside Drive, which is another part of Swansea. Variance six seeks to have the tallest side main walls on the street. In the broader context, there's five roulette gardens in a different part of Swansea with higher main walls, but it has no front setback or side yard variances. 44 Morningside, as was mentioned, is not a good comparison for this area. 45 Morningside, 44 Morningside is on a hill with a very different topography and reasons for approvals for those, that particular building. It also has a lower building height at only 9.8 meters. Again, not a good comparison for this one. 15 Jury also has a lower building height. Variance number seven seeks to have a first floor well and away the highest first floor on the street and in the study area by a very large margin. The others, one, six Sunnybrook with a variance of 0.2 meters. This application is proposing a variation of 1.19 meters, which is six times greater than approved for number six Sunnybrook. Variance number eight seeks a floor space index that is again the largest in the study area and pushes past the next level of zoning, which is 100%, right up into the apartment zone density of 200%. This is not only unique, it rezones the property and is not minor in our view. Variance number nine seeks to provide only one-third, actually now updated to less than half of the required soft landscaping. This is not minor or desirable. We point out that the data on the charts presented are useful for testing the application for the intent and purposes of the official plan policy 4.1.5 and the zoning bylaws. We're confident that the very low rate of compatibility with the broader and immediate neighborhoods demonstrate that the variances do not meet the tests for the intent and purpose of the official plan and of the zoning bylaws and do not pass the tests for approval. So in summary, collectively, the variances for height of the building, height of the main walls, front setbacks, side setbacks, and height of the first floor make this building too big and out of character. We note that the excesses are mainly the result of elevating the basement and the main floor to the top of the integral garage and could be avoided if the first floor was lowered closer to the established grade. We recommend that this application be refused and be redesigned to fit in better with the neighborhood. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much, Mr. Singh. I wonder if we could have the agent respond now to Mr. Singh's comments?
First of all, there are nine variances, not 11. I can just go through the points if that's helpful. He mentioned 1,200 comparables. I'm not sure where that number is coming from. I believe that the variances need to be looked at specifically for our project and how they are applied to this house, and, and that's what we've tried to do here with the specifics of the relation even to the street. Numbers two and three are for side yard setback. This is because the existing house is built that far off the side yard setback, it's not a new condition for the neighbor. It's an exist, existing condition of the house too, and therefore, the eaves would encroach as well as the sidewall. The variance for excess length, I did explain applies only to the portion of the basement that is below ground. The building above ground is not over the allowable length. I've had this approved before with the condition that it be tied, the length be tied to the basement, and we're okay with that. The height variances that I mentioned also are specific to how it's measured based on established grade, and topography is typical in this neighborhood, which affects the statistics for building height. What we don't have on this property is a higher established grade, we don't have topography, but we do have number 14 Sunnybrook. There aren't any statistics for the approvals or the variances for 14 Sunnybrook, it was built more than 10 years ago, but a visual inspection of it on the street shows that our main wall, our first floor level, would be in alignment with the main floor level of number 14. Number 14 has 10 risers to the first floor and a steeper slope on the driveway. We have 12 risers and a lower slope. This was actually the starting point for our design, is that we've, we're trying to be level with that house on the street as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Let me see if my colleagues have--
Can I--
Something else?
Yes, can I also mention, is the variance for the height, I did want to explain how that is coming to translate into a statistic. Our third floor is a very small portion of the floor area, and it is only to allow for two offices, which are private and separate from the bedroom level, and this is vital to how the house is used, it's vital to the work that the homeowners do. So the third floor is building two small offices into the sloped roof.
Okay, yeah. Thank you. Let me just see if my colleagues have any questions for you. Mr. Reed? No? Mr. Goguen, Mr. McKay? No? I do have one question for you, and that is, I'm looking at A9. You've got the rear-covered deck.
Yes.
And I can't tell from the materials that we have whether there's any overlook on this, this, did the deck cover the width of the, the house, or it's just--
It does, and we're happy to have privacy trellis features, absolutely.
That would be one, the only concern that I really, that popped out and one that I think might be a positive thing from your neighbor's perspective and from the owner's perspective as well.
Yeah.
So we could add that as a condition. Thank you. Mr. Reed has a question for you.
Thanks. I noticed on the site plan that for your, for the front driveway, it notes permeable pavers, would you be okay having that tied as a condition as well?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
I wonder if we could just tie it to the site plan, because I think it indicates it on the site plan.
It does, yeah.
Yeah, that might be great, thank you. Any, ready for a motion?
Through the chair, could the agent reconfirm the percentage of landscaping--
Sorry.
In variance nine?
Variance nine should read 33% landscaping.
Sorry, I think the numbers don't add up.
Oh, okay, sorry about that. I know why, because I can give you the numbers that correspond to that site plan, but we are able to center the driveway. We've spoken with transportation. It would be tied to a construction permit, so we're not able to design for a new curb cut or a new driveway at this point, but if we do center the driveway, we don't need to have it as wide as it's currently shown. We have mapped this out with a centered driveway, we have space for landscaping on the east side, and that's how we could get 33% landscaping. How do you--
That question, I take it tying it to the site plan S1 would be incorrect, because that would be the correct--
For the front drive, it would not be correct.
Okay, that's another revised one.
Yes, yeah, that's correct.
Thank you. So we could apply that condition, Mr. Reed? Yeah, thank you.
Staff, do you have what you need? Or there's still, we still need these--
Still a little confused. 33% doesn't equal to--
Meter squared, right?
Yeah, 13.2 meters squared is not 33%. If, if 75% is 15.26 square meters.
Okay. Do you, would, do you want to tell us what you have?
The numbers that were originally noted were not correct, did not make sense.
Well, should we correct what that 75% is?
75% is the required.
What is that in square meters?
Okay. The corrected percentages, if we reference the site plan that's drawn, it should be 10.41 meters square, and that represents 25% landscaping. The numbers that were noted before, 8.92, does not relate, does not translate to 44%.
I think what staff are saying is that 75% minimum of, which is equals to 15.26 meters, does not compute when you make, when you--
Oh, when I, oh--
They don't work. It doesn't go down to 33%, and then that, that would go down to more like seven square meters.
So that is an excellent point, and I'm beginning to, it makes me think that 15.26 is not the correct number, because there, the numbers just didn't make sense for the landscaping to begin with, and we didn't question 75% translated. Could I have a moment and confer with my staff to get that number?
Yeah, bear with me a second. Let me just see if we want to move on to the next item and give you time.
Absolutely.
Or let me just check with the deputy secretary treasurer if that would be all right.
Screw you, Mr. Chair, that's fine. Let's hold this item down until they can confirm the measurements.
Perfect, thank you so very much. Would you take time to come back with the corrected numbers and we can pick up after?
Do we raise our hand?
I'll, I'll, I'll see you coming in, or when you're ready, just, yeah, raise a hand or two. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so in the meantime, we'll move on to, thank you very much, Andy, for picking that up. We'll move on to item number 31. Item number 31, pardon me, is 153 Willow Avenue, and the purpose of this application is to alter the existing two-story detached dwelling by constructing a rear ground-floor deck and a rear second-floor deck. There's only one variance before us. We have, do we have the agent with--
Right, through the chair, the agents online, and there are no speakers.
Here.
Forgot to indicate what the materials that we have before us. The committee had before it the following communication. Copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations revised, site plan, floor plans, and elevations received January 16, 2025. Four photographs of the subject property received November 28, 2024. Three photographs of trees on the subject property received January 23, 2025. And we have seven form letters in support signed by owners and occupants of a variety of addresses on Willow Avenue. The agent--
Through the chair, the agent is online, there are no registered speakers.
Thank you. Is this Trevor Keir? Are you with us?
Yes, I'm here, Trevor Keir for 510 Jarvis Street.
Hi, good afternoon. Let me just see if my colleagues have any questions or concerns that they might like to raise with you. Does anybody have any questions or concerns with this particular application?
Sure, sure.
Thank you, Mr. Reed.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm noticing for your, that, the deck that has your, your variance request, you have put up some privacy screens on the side, but I don't think they're, I don't think they're to the height that we normally impose. You've got, oh, it is, 1,500, okay, sorry.
Actually, I spoke to transportation, or sorry, to transportation. I spoke to community planning about that, they asked me to add a note-- They asked me to add a note to the drawing for one on the north side. I think they said 1.5 meters.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, thank you. Sorry, I was just misreading that.
Sure.
And are you, are you fine if we tie, if we approve this, we tie it a condition for the privacy screening on the second floor?
Yes, they said they were going to actually submit something that tied it to it already, but yeah, we're fine with that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All good. Thank you.
All good.
All good. Thank you. Yeah, I noted as well that the privacy screens were in place and there's a measurement attached.
I thought you would.
Are there any other questions or can we move into a motion, look for a motion?
Yeah, I'm happy to move a motion for approval, Chair. I think that there are many of these rear balconies in this area. I think that, thanks to the applicant for sending those photos over, and even though the size is over what's permitted, it's, it's contained in, I think the depth, the limited depth of it makes it, the impact be lesser. So I'll move approval of the application subject to there being screening on the north and south side of the second floor deck.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Mr. McKay? Thank you. We have a motion to approve with no conditions. Oh, sorry, beg your, the one condition was privacy screening is the right place on the, sorry, this was the south and north sides of the rear balcony on the second floor.
Just, just the north side.
Sorry.
Just, just the north side.
Just the north side. Thank you.
Yeah, that's, I said both, but I, I understand why the north makes sense. The south is, is quite a ways away from the neighbors. So I think, yeah, just the north side. Thank you.
We still have the motion on the floor and the seconded. Do we have, oh, I should just ask, all in favor? Thank you. Your motion is approved, your application is approved, motion's been approved. Thank you. Okay, let's move on to item number 32, since our colleagues from number 30 haven't come back yet. Okay. Item number 32, the focus of the application is to alter the existing two-story detached dwelling by constructing a rear one-story addition with a modified deck and basement walkout and a complete third-story addition with a rear terrace. There will be one residential dwelling unit and one secondary suite within the basement of the site. We have two variances before us. The committee had before it the following communication. Copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, four photographs of the subject property received December 2, 2024, and presentation materials from Shahid Nenavati agent received on January 21, 2025. Okay.
Through the chair, we have the agent online, and there are no speakers for this item.
Good afternoon, Mr. Nenavati. How are you?
Good afternoon. Thank you so much. I am very well.
Thank you. Good to hear. With the honor, folks in opposition, so we don't, you don't have to present from that point of view. Let me just ask my colleagues if anybody has any, that they have a request for a presentation or questions. No questions, no presentation. Mr. McKay, you're good. Okay, thank you, sir. This is your lucky day, Mr. Nenavati. Nobody wants to ask any questions.
Thank you so much.
We have basically two variances before us. They both are relatively minor, so I don't see any issue with this particular application. I'm just going to go into committee now and ask for colleagues to come up with a motion and we can move along. Anybody ready with a motion? Mr. Gogan, thank you.
Motion, we approve this item. Again, as you said, most, both of these items, these variances are minor in nature. The floor space index is, is a slight ask, and it's in keeping with the neighborhood, and it's, I recommend we approve.
Thank you.
I'll second that, Chair.
Mr. Reed, thank you. We have a motion on the floor. Put forward by Mr. Gogan, seconded by Mr. Reed. All those in favor? Thank you. Mr. Nenavati, your application is approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Sunnybrook is back. The Sunnybrook application, they're ready to come back.
Please come back. Thank you. And that was number 30.
Number 30, 10 Sunnybrook.
Okay, number 30, we're back again. Thank you for coming back. I hope you got your kind of calculations solved. Thanks.
Absolutely. There was an error in the calculation of the 75% number also.
So this is variance number nine?
Variance number nine.
The correct numbers are now in meters?
A minimum of 75% would equal 30.94 meters squared.
So the 75 is 30.9?
Correct.
30.9 meters squared. And you, you're proposing to change it to?
We are proposing 33%, which translates to 13.78 meters square.
13.8 meters square.
78, if that makes.
Sorry, 78, I beg your pardon. Don't add to the confusion.
Might be.
Okay, thank you very much. Stanley, you good with that? We just, our mathematicians are checking.
Thank you for checking that. How is that off? Total available lot area is 41.25 square meters.
Sorry, if I, if I work backwards, 39.4 divided by .75, you get 52.53 square meters.
Oh.
And if I multiply that by 33%, I'm getting 17.34 square meters.
I'm sorry, can you repeat the first number you started with?
I'm just using your numbers, 39.4 square meters.
30.94.
So 39.4.
Nope, 30?
30.9.
30.
Oh, 30, sorry.
30.
30.4, you said?
Point 94.
Sorry, my mistake.
No, we're all, we're all confused, but I have it written in front of me.
Okay, so 30.4. Yeah, it looks good. Close enough.
We're all in keeping with the pace that the TTC subway moves at. Give us all. Thank you.
No, no, this is good.
Thank you very much for that. Let me take it into committee and hopefully we can get a decision for you. So colleagues, we now have a, an amended, an amended amended application. So variance number nine would now read 33% equals 30.78 meters squared. Anybody have a motion?
Sorry, through you, Mr. Chair. Variance number nine will also read 75% at 30.9 square meters is what's required.
Right. That's correct.
Yes, okay. And then variance number 10 has been removed.
That's correct. Thank you.
My notice is an urban forestry condition one and three. Is that, yes? Okay, all right. So it's, okay. The applicant, you're familiar with those, urban forestry suggestion conditions, one and three relating to trees?
Absolutely.
Okay, good. Sorry.
Okay, I have just a comment for, for discussion.
Please.
And this kind of goes back to what you were saying earlier about numbers of variances. This is a new building on the site. So when I see every, is pushing the envelope in every direction, I always look at what can be built on the site, what's allowed. If I put a box on the site, what's allowed, where the constraints, and then where are we? And I always have challenges with a brand-new building that we're pushing the envelope in every direction and not working. And I understand like a variance in, in a certain dimension setback or whatnot, but not every direction. So that's my, my debate here personally is that it looks like we're, 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 I feel that it's, each one seems minor, but when you add them all up, it seems more than minor to me at this point in time. I can be, maybe talked out of it, but that's my challenge right here with this application. And I understand also that the building height and the numbers of steps is referenced to how the, off the established grade. And then the building could go lower into the ground as well. And that would, that would impact the overall building height, not the floor-to-floor, but maybe the building height. So I, again, I think there's some, for me, that's just the challenge for me on this.
Yeah, I'll put some comments in. I actually, I think, I like this proposal. The depth or the length, whichever one we're talking about, is, I think the fact that that's limited to the basement, that goes a long way. The bulk of the house is, is compliant for, for the rest of it. And I think the massing, how it, it steps down and there's only this, there's only a small portion that, that is this top floor, and that's contained like towards the middle of the house. And I think that that lessens the impact on the neighbors in terms of any shadowing or just feeling of mass adjacent. So I, I actually support it and I, but I would, I would tie it to, well, I'll let, I'll let Gary go ahead, but I'd tie it to the side elevations to secure that massing because I think that's an important part of, of this, this project.
I'm not sure where I'm at, so I don't think I'll put forward that motion. Kind of confused. Go ahead. I think the thing that's off the page for me is that, like, it's a .6 times FSI.
Yeah.
And a 1.5. And I know that's partly due to the grade and where you establish where, where grade is and whatnot. But, and I also look at the new houses, at one, there's one built that kind of across the street a bit and one down the block. And so there is, there are precedents in the neighborhood as well.
Yeah.
Perhaps while Mr. McKay's thinking through the process, I'll put my two cents worth in. I, I think Mr. Gogan's point is well taken because one of the challenges that we're having, I think, in the city, and I've seen this in the North York area, where a new build, the question often that pops up from committees of adjustment is if it's a new build, why can it not comply with most of the variances that are required, particularly the front yard setback? And there may be other issues related to length and depth and so on. Having said that, I also think that at the same time, we, we do have precedence in that area as well as other areas. And by and large, this project is not so egregious that it smacks me in the face and says you cannot possibly go through with this particular application. In that sense, I tend to agree with Mr. Reed. So yeah, there may be some reservations with a couple of the variances, but overall, I think this is an acceptable proposal. And I think once completed, it will fit in quite nicely as changes begin to take place, and not only in Swansea, but in other parts of the city as well. I find more egregious double basements and seven-car parking garages, that sort of thing. So this is a modest structure relative to others.
I, yeah, I would add too, I think that the first floor height, I think that that's, it's been mitigated quite well here, how they, they've built up the landscaping on, on that side. So it appears not as high as it is, and it's, it's screened as well.
The other thing, I do appreciate the change, the amended variance number nine.
One thing that does drive the height of these buildings up is that a lot of the houses new on this street don't have parking inside the building. So it doesn't force the floor up.
Yeah, that's the driver.
So if you look at the ones that are around, I don't know what the numbers are, but they're, none of them, all of them have an elevated ground floor, but they're not to the same magnitude because they don't have the integral parking space. And that's always a debate in the downtown kind of neighborhoods, is, is, is integrated parking part of kind of the streetscape and all the other things, but that's not our problem. But, but I do think that's what's driving this, this thing to be not compliant in a, in a few ways.
Yeah, agreed, Paul. I think that's the main thing.
Coming back to Mr. McKay.
Well, I'll, I'll move approval of the revised variance application, subject to urban forestry conditions one and three. And members, have I missed anything else in terms of the?
Yeah, could, could we add maybe permeable pavers for the driveway as a condition? And also, if you're okay, tying it to the side elevations, east and west elevations?
Yes.
For the, for the length and depth.
I'm fine with that. Members, staff, got that okay in terms of those? Yeah, just got, okay.
I'd second that, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. So we had, we have an amended application before us. Conditions would be include tying to side elevations, pardon me, and requesting permeable pavers in the driveway. Forestry conditions number one and two, I believe that is all.
One and three.
Sorry, one and three. I beg your pardon. Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. Three approve. Mr. Gogan, opposed? Thank you. You have your approval. Thank you.
Thank you.
Which one is it now? Is it 32?
33.
33. Oh, right, 32, we're done. 33. Purpose of the application, to legalize and to maintain the front porch and stairs that were constructed without an authorized building permit. The previous front porch and stairs were demolished. We have one applica, one variance in front of us. Committee was provided with the following communication. Copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, one photograph of the subject property received December 3, 2024, and in order to comply affecting subject property.
Yeah, through the chair, we have the agent online, as well as one opposition speaker online as well.
This is number 33. Good afternoon, Mr. Locistano?
Yes, good afternoon.
Hi, good afternoon. We might need just a short presentation. We have one person in opposition.
Sure.
Thank you.
The, the existing, there was an existing porch and stair at the front of the building. The client was told by the contractor that he would be able to widen it without a building permit, which unfortunately is not true. So that was the proposed, or what you show and propose, but is existing at this time. We did not get any closer to the property line, the front property line. We do have variances for the south property line, but the north property line is no- We do have variances for the south property line, but the north property line is no worse than it was before. And the front variance is no worse than it was before from the staircase. Other than that, again, this is very minor in nature and really has no impact on adjacent properties, and we feel that it meets all the four tests.
Thank you very much. I think our person in opposition may be by video, so is Mario Olivera? Are you online?
Yes, it's Mario Olivera. How are you?
Thank you. I wonder if you could state your, your position in, you've got five minutes to go.
Wouldn't you mean position? Oh, yes, I'm in opposition of this, of this alteration of the variance or variance in bylaw. Is that correct?
You're the immediate neighbor, the?
That's, that's correct. Yes, on the south side.
Okay. Is there any particular reason why you oppose it?
Yes, there's, there's a number of reasons. If I can just, how long do I have? Five minutes? I mean, it's more than enough, five minutes, but?
No problem. You go ahead.
Okay, great. I've just written some points down, so I think I'm, it's, I don't do this often, so I'm gonna just kind of like read through them and hopefully that if you got any questions you can ask me on the way, as I read them. So this, this veranda, I don't know if I should, maybe I should just start chronologically. So the thing is, is that this is a rooming house, right? And it's been a rooming house since it was purchased by these owners, and it was a rooming house illegally done in the area. And, and you know, where my family and myself, we like to get along and we mind our own business and let other people figure out their own issues. Now, they had an illegal rooming house, nothing was said, or I didn't say anything, nobody complained about it. And the homes are attached, there's just a block between the houses. This is an older home, it's I think fifty, sixty years old, so it's just a block. So any type of noise transfers through both of the houses, both of the homes. Now, it's a rooming house, and it was illegal at the time, however, bylaw changes in the city. Sorry, did somebody interrupt me?
No, no.
Okay. So some bylaw changes caused this house now that's a rooming house became legal, not through any doing of the, of the owners. So now it's a legal rooming house, but it's still illegal because they've got anywhere from twenty to thirty people in there. And like I said, once again, there's, this house gets quite rowdy, you know, and once again, we try to get along with everybody. So we, you know, they, they play music usually on the weekends, and they have, lately they haven't, now it's just construction noise. So they play, and this has been going on for years. And we really do try to get along with everybody, and they've, they've got music going throughout the night till like seven o'clock, eight o'clock in the morning. And you know what? We don't complain, and we can hear the music. You know, I love music. But there's been a couple of times where it wasn't just music, but I thought they were tearing the house apart, where I had to make a couple of calls to the guy who brings in these undocumented workers. And so I told him, I said, listen, I don't mind the music, I really don't, you know, I can hear it, and sometimes it bothers my sleep, but it's music. But the, the noise of the, it sounds like they're destroying the house. I said, you know what? That I can't handle. So you know, I've had to make a couple of calls there now. Now, they, they've torn the veranda down, and by the way, my father owns this home and my mom. My dad's ninety-three years old, he's got stage IV cancer, he's in a bed, he can't get out. He sleeps in the main front room in the convalescent bed. My mother sleeps in another hospital bed next to him. He doesn't get out of bed. My mom gets out of bed, but she, she sits in a chair looking out the window. My, I have two healthcare workers come one hour in the morning, one hour in the evening to take care of my parents bathing and other things that are not so comfortable for them if I did that. So they, their care is given right there in that room, the front room. These houses are old homes, they don't have a bathroom in the main floor. So these kind, this kind of care has to be done there. We've lived here for forty years. This is a residential neighborhood, but there's a business here, an illegal business at that. And so now they want to expand the veranda, and they, I don't know what, what purpose that serves, it's just gonna be a privacy issue for my parents who lived there for forty years, or at the end of their, their end-stage life, right? And they can't have any, they can't look out the window now because they got a veranda one foot away from their window. I mean, imagine your bedroom, and somebody goes and puts a veranda one foot away from your bedroom window. That is unacceptable. And it's, and it's unfortunate that that's where my parents live, but that's these houses, it's a residential area. I can't have my mother move up to the second floor. In fact, two weeks ago, on the weekend, just over two weeks ago, my mother fell down the stairs, she had to go to the hospital, now she's getting rehab soon at home because they can't give it to her right away. And they wanted to keep her in the hospital for two, two weeks, three, four weeks.
Mr. Locchisano, if I may interrupt you, you've got about thirty seconds to go. If I don't mind, can you wrap up?
Yes, I can. So there, there's a privacy issue, the, the veranda is right up against the, the property line. When they put their, their canopy on their veranda, the eaves troughs are gonna be right on the property line because the bottom concrete is about eight inches away from the, or less than eight inches away, from the center line or the property line. So when anyone puts a canopy or veranda roof over the veranda, it's gotta overlap the concrete lip, so it's gonna be?
I'm sorry to interrupt you again, but your time is up. I, I just wanted to mention to you that as far as, you just mentioned what sounds like covering for the veranda, but I don't think that's there at all.
No, it's not there yet.
No, no, it's basically just asking us to legalize and permit the front porch as shown in a photograph that they have. But thank you so very much. We'll wait for a response from, sorry, Mr. Olivera, I refer to you as Mr. Locchisano, it's Mr. Locchisano who will refer, who will provide a response to your position. Thank you so much.
I have a question for him.
Oh, can you hold on, Mr. Olivera? We have a question for you.
Thank you, sir. I understand that your main concern is about the privacy and the looking out the window onto this, this new porch. Would, would it help from your perspective if there was some sort of privacy screen put on, on the side that separates you?
I, I don't think it would help because, I mean, my parents are in their end-stage life, and they, they can't move around the house. Their only place to live is in that area, that main room in the front of the house. It's got a big window, as you can see, you know, it's comparable to the one, 2169. So that's how they see the world and how they view the world. They can't go upstairs, downstairs, or nothing like that. So they're, they're, they're kind of locked in that front room. And having a privacy fence there isn't gonna cut it, because it's gonna block their own view from looking out the window, and it's gonna have somebody right there. I mean, obviously, anybody can approach a window and look in, but we're talking about a living space now by putting the veranda. They're supposed to be one point four, one point five meters away from the center line, and they're not. They're right at the edge, and that's unacceptable. Mind you that they did all this illegally, and then after they were told to stop, they could, they, so this was after they had torn the veranda down, they were told to stop. What did they do? They built it anyway. So they don't have any regard for the bylaws. So they built it despite being told not to build anything else. In fact, they're actually doing construction in the house now, and they don't have a permit for that. And this is a business, and this is a residential neighborhood, and that should be, you know, my father's been here for forty years. He shouldn't have to be the one to move.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olivera. I would also perhaps refer you to, no problem, just to refer you to calling 311 if you feel that there is something amiss with your neighbor or anywhere else for that matter. We here are only looking at the variances that are requested before us, and that's our limited jurisdiction. Thank you very much. Mr. Locchisano, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
I wonder if you might provide a response, perhaps?
Sure. Really sorry to hear about the neighbor's parents. The, the situation in this house is that it is, it's listed as a single-family dwelling. It is rented to a single person who has nine members of his family living there. The, with regards to the roof, there is no intent to put a roof over this existing porch. With regards to the distance to the window, I just checked it on our drawing, the porch is three foot ten away from the window, so there really is no way for somebody to look in to that window. And the intent is really not to hang out on this porch. It was really more to clean up the front space where it was in shambles before, because there was, long ago, there was an existing concrete wall there that we're showing being demo, or we actually reused, because we feel that there was probably a porch there way back, and then was opened up because of the basement window. But other than that, there's, there's no intent for a roof. You know, with all due respect, we can't really do anything about the noise, it's really not in front of the committee that that should be handled. But other than that, I have nothing else to add.
Thank you. Let me just see if my colleagues have questions or response. Mr. McKay?
Yes. Okay, I know, could you shorten the porch? Why not so off part of that piece on the, on the right?
Well, that was the, that was the existing concrete wall that was there before, and as you can see, there's a limited distance to the right side of that window that we extended it. So again, you know, we're talking about shortening it by a foot, is it gonna make that much more of an impact? There really is no impact on, on the neighbor at all. If anything, it is now clean in front of the building rather than being in shambles and disrepair. The final product does not look like that as it is a finished product now.
Well, I think impact is the issue.
But there is no impact. There's zero impact because the width of this porch doesn't really allow for a large number of people to be on it. It only extends out four foot eight. So, you know, you're limited to maybe one or two person being out there, possibly smoking, if anything. But other than that, I don't even see it being used. It was more just to clean it up.
Mr. Gogan?
When I look at street view for this house, it shows windows, basement windows, and then it shows a much smaller, almost like just a landing for that door. Why was that not an acceptable? And are those windows gone now?
Sorry, where?
Do I have the right address here? It's 2169, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so when I look on street view, it shows windows underneath the main floor windows.
Correct. Those windows are still there.
Oh, but the photo, the construction photo that you included in your attachment doesn't show any windows there.
Oh, I see, you're correct.
So I don't know what?
Again, our purpose was really the front porch. We, we didn't really do a measure-up of the house except for the exterior facade from the survey, but we didn't really do an interior layout, because it wasn't really required for a porch addition. That's why I was saying is that way back, the, the wall you see on the right-hand side, that was existing. So that sort of triggered that there was already a porch at some point there, but I guess when they put in that new window in the basement, they, they shortened the width, or not shortened the width, but lessened the width of the existing porch so that that window became visible. But again, that's now been taken out. This window is still accessible underneath the porch, which will be covered with probably some bushes in the, in the future.
If I may just ask you a question, Mr. Locchisano, you're suggesting that the vertical wall that supports the porch?
Yes.
Crosses to the neighbor, that existed previously?
Correct. If you look at the sur, the existing survey, it clearly shows that. They left that wall there, and we, we are using it.
Do you know how long ago this wall existed?
I don't. I would have to look back to see, there is there a CW, that's concrete wall. That's on the original survey of the building that we recently got. Again, if you go up and down Dufferin Street, a lot of the porches are actually joined as well, where I guess the neighbors sort of worked in tandem and did that. But this is not out of character to have these, these porches go right across the front of the house.
Thank you. I think we'll take this into committee and have our discussion and due consideration. So colleagues, I was just wondering, I think part of the challenge is that we've got an existing structure, which in and of itself is not a major, from, from my perspective, it doesn't present a major issue. I think for the neighbor, what is more problematic is the, that you've got a house that is pretty noisy next door, and by the agent's account, it sounds like there may be at least about a dozen people living in that home. I don't know how large the home is, but certainly when you have a dozen people, and particularly if most of them are teenage age or a little older, the sound level, the noise level, of course, that becomes problematic. How this, this particular porch may be used in the future, I, I'm not quite in tune with the agent who suggests maybe two people will be out there. It remains to be seen. I do recommend, I think, I would recommend to the neighbor that they do report the matter to the appropriate city authorities through 311, and deal, have that issue dealt with. In terms of the porch itself, it's built. I'm not quite sure if it's something that we want to have removed at this point at additional expense.
I thought they said it was removed.
Sorry, Mr.?
On the agenda, it said that the previous front porch and, oh, the previous were removed.
Some time back.
The one that was just around the door was removed. Oh, I thought that, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I agree, Chair. I, I think that, I mean, it is set back still in terms of like the, the variance, right? It could step back from the property line, and then there is that, a sizable amount of space until the neighbor's window starts. And I, I mean, the agent did, the agent recommend, or mentioned that a lot of houses on the stretch of Dufferin do have full front porches that are connecting, and it's, it's true. I mean, I, I know this area, and so I think that that, that pattern of larger porches is there. I, I think it's a defensible application. I'll support it.
I'll comment. These buildings are attached, they're kind of one building. So I find it strange that the owner wouldn't consult with the adjacent owner on a piece of infrastructure like this, something on the front of the house that affects both of them. So, and I can't comment on the unfortunate situation of the neighbor family, which further aggravates this, but they changed something that didn't need to be changed. It was, there was a landing and a set of stairs, and it was functional, and I think that they should reinstate, even if that's allowed, what they had before. I, I think the loss of privacy is a significant issue.
Mr. McKay, any thoughts?
Yeah, I'm not prepared to support it as it is, so I'll be voting to refuse.
I think when one looks at neighbors up and down the street on both sides of this property, they have extending front porches that are attached. So I think that's, it's not, it's not a precedent-setting issue. The privacy issue may be a concern, and perhaps, as Mr. Reed you suggested, requiring a privacy screen, but then the neighbor is not quite keen on that either, so.
I'd like to comment further. I mean, there is an order to comply, so in the sense of sort of what's equitable and what's fair, I think the fact that it was built without a permit, you know, should, should have some consequence for the, for the applicant. for the, for the applicant. And the consequence, at least from my point of view, is that I'm not going to vote for its approval.
Thank you, Mr. McKay. Mr. Reed, Mr. Gogan, any thoughts?
I already stated my thoughts, but it sounds, it sounds like you guys have a motion, so I'd go ahead.
You raise a good point that if you look at the landscape, there's a lot of porches with roofs kind of going down there, but I see them as like the, the semi-detached or, you know, I, my, my in-laws live in one and I know it's a very unique world when you have someone on the other side of your wall. And then it's, it's kind of almost some implied cooperation applied.
Yeah.
And, uh, this was, this is a problem that was created. It didn't exist previously. So, um, I, I, I just don't support it the way it is. I think that, that, that so many three wrongs don't make a right here. So, um, I, I won't support this, um, application.
We look forward to a motion.
I'll make a motion that we reject this, uh, application.
I'll second that motion. Hopefully the applicant can, uh, work with the city and maybe have come some other, some other ideas or some revisions. But I support the, I support the motion to refuse.
Thank you. So we have a motion on the floor with Mr. Gogan, um, with putting forward a motion to refuse the application to legalize and Mr. McKay seconding. Do we have, uh, sorry, all in favor of the refusal? Thank you. Motion is to refuse and Mr. Reed, uh, Mr. Reed opposes, dissents. Thank you. Your application, sir, has been refused. And now moving on to. Pardon me. We move on to item number 34. Item number 34. Yes. 53 Boston Avenue, purpose of which is to alter the existing two and one-half story detached dwelling by constructing a rear one-story addition with basement extension below, a rear ground floor deck with stairs. The existing rear deck and stairs will be demolished and a rear basement walkout. We have before us three variances. The committee had before it the following communication. Copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations. And six photographs of trees on the subject property received December the 10th, 2024. And. Uh, Austin Eminow is the agent. Do we have Mr. Eminow on the?
Yeah, Austin, you have been muted.
Hello, my name is Austin Eminow of 82 Formosa Drive in Richmond Hill.
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you. It's almost evening, I think. Thank you. Um, bear with us. Let me just see if, uh, we don't have anybody in opposition to your application. Let me just see if my colleagues have any questions or concerns they'd like to raise with you.
Not for me, Chair. Thank you.
Not for me.
No. Mr. McKay, no. Mr. Gogan? None? Okay. It looks like we don't have any questions for you. And I think when I looked at it, I thought there were just three variances and thought they were minor. So I don't have any questions either, so bear with me while we move into committee and look for a motion.
Thank you.
I'll take this.
Mr. Reed, thank you.
I think that what's being proposed is extremely minor and it still results in a house that's much smaller than, uh, most on the street in terms of the length and depth. Um, and the, the impacts of these variances are extremely minor, particularly given that one-story rear addition. So I move approval without condition.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Do we have a second? Mr. McKay, thank you kindly. All those in favor? Thank you. Unanimous decision to approve. Uh, thank you, Mr. Eminow. You have approval.
Thank you.
Welcome. And finally, our last item on the agenda. Final item on the agenda is 75 Roxborough Street West. Purpose of this application is to construct a new three-story detached dwelling with frontier, front and rear, uh, ground floor covered porches and a rear third-story balcony. Uh, we have before us three, uh, variances. The committee had before it the following communication. Copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations. And Arborist's report received December the 5th, 2024. Presentation materials from the agent received on January 22nd, 2024. We also have staff reports and correspondence from the community planning and email correspondence from the community planning. Staff reports from urban forestry, from community planning. Um, nah, sorry, uh, and another one from urban forestry as well. Ravine and natural features protection. An advisory staff report from the supervisor, tree protection and plan review, urban forestry. We have support letters from, uh, 81 Roxborough Street West. Received January 15th. And for, uh, form letters from 72, 73 and 77 Roxborough Street West. Received 21st of January, 2025.
Yeah, through the chair, we have the agent here in person.
Oh.
Also, yeah, we, we do have one, we do have one, um, speaker in opposition also in person as well.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Manios, since we have one person in opposition, I wonder if you could provide us with a presentation, please?
Happy to, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Chair, uh, so, uh, as you mentioned, Mr. Chair, we're proposing a new three-story detached dwelling to replace the existing three-story dwelling. We are requesting, uh, three variances under the 569 bylaw. Uh, first variance being FSI or GFA, we're proposing point seven eight versus allowable point six. Um, we had submitted as part of our presentation material, a list of variants, uh, list of approvals on the, in the neighborhood. Uh, those on Roxboro range anywhere from point six seven to 1.06 with the average being around the point eight mark. So we're sort of below what's been approved in the neighborhood. And just to mention a point is this building above grade complies, like the footprint is within the zoning envelope from setback building depth, height and everything. So we're within the envelope that the zoning permits. Uh, the building depth of 21.26 versus the allow was 17 meter. That's strictly to the basement portion only. Uh, and this is a true basement. Uh, it's only, uh, six, the ceiling of the basement is about six inches above grade. So it's completely buried in the ground. The above portion of, uh, of the dwelling complies with the 17-meter depth with the third floor being even 15 meters. So anything above grade is in compliance. The last variance being the eve setback on the west side yard setback, uh, we're pro, uh, it's only at the pinch point, which is at the center part of the property. Uh, we're proposing point oh nine versus the required point three meter. Uh, as I said, it's the eight point nine meter. The front and the back exceeds the requirement by miles. Um, as you mentioned, Mr. Chair, we do have four letters of support, uh, including the immediate east and west neighbor. We have no objection to staff recommended, uh, condition regarding variance number two for the building depth that we, that it be strictly adhere to, uh, site plan, which we have no choice but to do that because even if we intended to make the building bigger, it would increase, it would trigger an additional FSI variance, but we have no objection to the variance. Uh, forestry, there are no conditions. It's more of an advisory. Uh, we do have, there's so many letters from forestry because the back part of the property is on the ravine control. We have already submitted applications. We do have, uh, consultation with, uh, the city trees at the front of the property. It's more of an access issue than the house itself. The house complies with all the required tree protection zone. So the only issue we're working with forestry on is access for construction. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Um, I, I think you're aware of the planning condition. That the proposal be constructed in, uh, substantially in accordance with.
Yes.
Drawing A1, the site plan.
Yeah, we have no objection to that, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you so much. We'll just, uh, take a breather and have the person in opposition speak first. Thank you. And then you can respond to their concerns. Thank you. Good evening. Hi, good evening. I wonder if you could state your name and address, please, sir?
Yes, my name is Daniel Owen, O W E N. And we live at 71 Roxborough Street West, two doors to the east of the applicant.
Thank you. You have five minutes to make your case. You have five minutes to make your case.
Thank you. Well, I, I think we may not take that long.
No problem.
The, uh, my objection, uh, is, uh, to the, the floor space index and the building depth. Uh, the floor space, that's fine for it to be that. If it didn't spill the building southward further than it was originally intended. Uh, if they want to have the extra space for all the rooms in the house, then it would be very beneficial to have that done to the north, not the south. Because the south, the south is, uh, looks onto Ramsden Park and is very attractive. And all of my neighbors and myself have adhered to all the limitations on the southern exposure of our houses. Uh, I bought my house in, uh, or we bought our house in 1990. And then in 2008, tore it down and rebuilt. And we rebuilt, well, we built a new house adhering to all the exposure limitations, including, uh, including the porch. We would be gravely disappointed, as would so many of my other neighbors, if we were to suddenly have this previously adhered to southern line removed from us by someone plunging their house southward, uh, including a 15-foot porch. It, it's deeply offensive because it stops our looking westwards and it stops our eastern neighbors looking eastwards. And, um, so if they need, they need the space, the two ways they can enjoy a porch. Uh, one would be to build the house more on the northern side, which wouldn't bring any objection, I would have thought, to most neighbors because the north side is just the street of Roxborough Street West. And nobody cares about looking onto that. So if they moved their, their square footage requirement to the north side of the house, that would be amicable. And they can put their porch up on the southern end of the south side of the house on the third floor. Uh, rather than trying to put it on the ground floor and intruding down into the garden by 15 feet. I, I can't emphasize enough, uh, Mr. Chairman, how permitting this to occur as it's being proposed would seem to me to be a betrayal of what I and all my neighbors have had to adhere to in the last 15 or 20 years where we've built the houses there or reconstructed. Because we've all had a limit on our southern exposure and we've adhered to it. Uh, even though some of us have tried to change it a bit, but we're all at the same. And to suddenly see this huge intrusion, uh, damages the value of current properties and sets a precedent so that anyone else coming along is going to say, I'd like another 15 feet of southern building as well. So I would ask and urge the committee to, if you would, to, uh, to say to the applicant, please find your square footage further on the north side of your house. Cause no one would object to that. And if you want a, uh, a porch, then have the porch on the south side of the house, but on the third floor, not on the ground floor. And that's what I would ask of you, Mr. Chairman.
Very much. Thank you for your presentation. We'll let the agent give you a response. Thank you. Mr. Manios, it's all yours.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So if staff could be kind enough to bring up the presentation material that we submitted a few days ago, uh, the site plan, the first drawing. Uh, what we showed on the site plan is two things. One is, uh, we basically plotted from the city mapping, uh, Mr. Owen at number 71, uh, the footprint of his house. And, uh, I'm going to refer you later on to the pictures. It actually shows the house extending beyond the allowable 17-meter depth with a one-story portion, which is not a covered porch, it's actually an enclosed one-story. Also on that same site plan, there's a dash line at the back of the property be, beyond the proposed covered porch, which, uh, we've labeled as line of permitted as of right unexcavated covered porch. I just want to be clear with the committee is the variance is not the porch. The variance is the fact that the porch is excavated. So theoretically speaking, if the committee elects not to approve variance number two, the porch will still be there and it can also extend another easily 10 feet further over, which is permitted. The bylaw basically, what the bylaw says is covered porches, as long as they comply with, with all setbacks being rear yard, side yard, and they're not more than 1.2 meter in height are allowable and exempt. The, the porch we're proposing, we're not pushing the envelope in all directions. We were proposing it to be 14 feet to cover that portion of the basement, which is at variance. But the porch, just without sounding like a broken record, the porch is not at variance. It complies 100% and it can also be bigger. If staff can scroll through the presentation materials to the pictures. So basically if you, uh, the last picture, uh, I'll, I'll just hold. Okay, uh, if you don't mind zooming in for the benefit of the committee. So this is a picture taken from, I'm standing basically at where the proposed, the covered porch would be, looking to eastwards. The house next door is the number, number 73, which is the next door neighbor. And just before I go too far forward, both immediate neighbors have supported this application. If there's, you have written support. The house beyond the white one is number 71 and it shows that one-story projection, which is not a covered porch and which would have not complied with the 17-meter depth, which we do comply with. Our above grade complies. Uh, moving the house forward, we trigger a front yard variance. We reduce the front yard. We trigger landscape variances. The actual portion of the house above grade, the two-story portion is 100% in compliance. Shifting it forward or backwards is not going to change the fact that it is, it's allowed to be 17 meter deep. Also on file is Mr. Owen's, uh, objection letter that, uh, he had sent. We had provided packages to the neighbors in order for them to approach us with their comments. And I'm just reading straight from his own writing. It says the above grade building depth of 55 foot nine is reasonable as it is. It is the below ground extension except that, that the proposal calls for an extended above-ground porch. So it doesn't seem like, uh, the neighbor to the, uh, two doors down has any objection with the actual basement projecting. And as I mentioned, the covered porch is allowable and it's very close to the ground as well. We've kept this house close to grade as much as possible. So at, at the front, we're only a couple of steps up. At the back, we just, there's a natural drop-off in grade from front to back. So we have an extra two or three steps at the back of the house. But the basement is a true basement. It's at the front, it's 95% below grade. At the back, it's about, I'd say 85 to 86% below grade. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Colleagues, any questions?
Not for me, thank you.
No? Uh, I, I do have one question just related to the, uh, porch. It's a covered porch, um, on either side and I'm thinking of direction here.
Eastern, western. Eastern, west.
Eastern, west, thank you. Is there overlook to your neighbors that might require raising or putting in a little opaque screening at all?
So we did sit down with both immediate neighbors and none of them have asked for it. Now, on the west side, it wouldn't be technically possible because the porch does not extend the full width of the house. So if you were to put a screen, it would actually butt into the windows of the family room facing the back. The east neighbor, we had a ton of consultation because there's a right-of-way between the buildings and we were trying to negotiate with them shifting the house over and altering the right-of-way. And the porch, we mapped it out for them, we stood there and there was no objection whatsoever from them.
Thank you. I just, just.
And it's, as I mentioned, it's, the porch is actually very close to the ground. It's not one of those houses where it's eight or nine feet up in the air.
Thank you. I was just looking at a Google Street Map and looking at the planned, planned perspective. Do you have any idea what the length of your proposed property compared to number 77 and number 71? Because I noticed there are a number of properties in that street that all seem to have a reasonable depth, a depth longer than your existing structure.
So if Mr. Chair can refer to the presentation material, the list of variances that have been approved on, just on Roxborough. There's a ton of length variances. So we're not rocking the boat by any means. The house next door to the west is actually longer, but I'll, I'll put a provise on that. That house has just been demolished. So when we, when we started the process, the house was still standing and the survey was done. And the, the house that was there was actually deeper than what we're proposing today in front of you and you can see that from the site plan.
Is that number 71?
That's number 77.
77.
77 already is deeper than our 17 meter, which complies.
Thank you.
Now, that house has been demolished and I know the, the new owners have applied for a building permit and they're going through the process. So we don't know what the new house is going to look like. We're just basing it on the previous one. The house next door to the east, we do understand that the neighbor is going to be putting an addition to the back. Yes, the existing house is shorter, but the one, two doors down to the east, Mr. Owen, is definitely more, way more than 17 meter because even the front portion is enclosed and it would be counted in building depth.
Thank you. And I'd just like to add maybe that the, Mr. Owen had mentioned the front street view, but there's front yard setbacks as well, which have to be complied.
Well, we comply.
You're not requesting a change there.
We're going by the average of the two neighbors.
Yep.
Which is typically what the city of Toronto is looking for.
Exactly. Okay, thank you. Let me take it into committee and see if my colleagues have any questions. Mr. McKay has a question?
One quick question, just so I understand a little better. On variance two, and you're asking for a depth of 21.26 meters, that additional depth, you're saying, just really relates to the basement, which is largely underground. Is that correct?
It's strictly to the basement.
I'm sorry, it is?
Strictly to the basement. The first floor is 16.99 meters.
All right.
And, and that's why staff is recommending it to be tied to the site plan.
Thank you.
Any other comments, colleagues?
No, thanks, Chair.
Oh, thank you. Perhaps we'll stay in committee and look for a motion.
I'd like a comment.
Sure, a comment.
Me and my kids and my dog go to Ramsden Park all the time, so I don't have a conflict, but I do know the park quite well. And it's an interesting little laneway behind these houses because it's a kind of a informal road, neighborhood road. There's a lot of parking, there's a lot of garages. A lot of people have invested a lot of money into making those garages almost like a second street elevation because they face the park and they, and it's an interesting dynamic. And also, there's a considerable grade difference between Roxborough and the park that people have to kind of step down. So my, although I do appreciate the gentleman from 71, his, his feedback and commentary about preserving the views. When I look at a lot of the things, a lot of the views are defined also by the, whether or not there's a parking, a parking garage or not or whatnot. There's a lot of things happening along that laneway. But I do find that the proposed solution that they've brought is minor in nature because it, it's asking for relief from a few, few areas, but not a wholesale relief across the site. So I, I support this application.
Thank you. Want to turn that into a motion, sir?
I will, if anyone else wants to. Okay. If anyone else has anything else, I'd say I'd like to make a motion that we approve this application. I don't believe there's any forestry conditions for this application.
They are planning conditions and that's.
And that's the planning conditions that were associated for the site plan. But other than that, I find that, again, the request of variance is minor in nature and make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Gogan. Seconder? Mr. McKay, thank you. Mr. McKay seconds. All those in favor? Thank you. The application's been approved unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of committee.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Thanks, staff.
And with that, we conclude today's, today's hearings. It's 5:17 PM.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Thanks, Sabrina.
Thank you, Sabrina.
You look great today, by the way.
Safe travels home, everyone.